Okay.
This is WZRD Chicago eighty-eight point three FM. And we have with us Maggie Colerden Hooper. She is running for elected school board member in the District Two. How are you, Maggie?
I'm great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Maggie, tell us a bit about yourself and what made you run? Did, were you encouraged to run or did you make the decision by yourself?
Yeah, so I am an Albany Park resident. I have a single mom of two kids who attend our neighborhood elementary school. It's Hibbard Elementary. I've been on the LSC, the local school council there for the last eight years. I started as a community rep. I became a parent representative once my kids started, obviously. I got to serve as the chair for a principal selection process. And just generally, you know, have been really engaged in, in public education and advocacy through Raise Your Hand. I'm one of their trained parent leaders. I am a person with disabilities. I have dyslexia, processing delays, ADHD, and live with mental illness. And then I also have a child with disabilities who has an IEP. So through that process and some of the work I do with Raise Your Hand, I became a volunteer parent advocate for families of kids with disabilities. So I, you know, meeting with them before or after an IEP meeting to help them understand their rights or even sitting in on IEP meetings. The Board of Ed has never had a person with disabilities on the board in history. I think that it's a really important. Disability justice is kind of not often centered in a lot of our conversations around marginalized folks. And I think it's a really important place to have that direct lived experience. So I was, I was encouraged to run by friends, by fellow parents, by advocates. And then, um, once I learned about that, that sort of wanting to make sure that disability was being talked about. Every single conversation around this election was really, really important to me. So I decided to run.
When, um, before, uh, in your previous, uh, in the previous years when you were an LSC member and all the other work that you were doing, did you ever attend, uh, CPS board meetings and bring your concerns to the board that there wasn't anybody representing people with disabilities? Uh, at least no board member, uh, that, that was a person with a disability?
Yeah, I mean, I know that, um, Access Living and other disability justice organizations have been advocating with mayors, mayoral administrations to appoint members since the first dedicated disability seat on a city board was the CTA under Harold Washington administration. So I know that, you know, all of the people leading in these spaces have been fighting for that. I have attended board meetings. I have offered public comment. It is, it's a little tricky to get in. There's only so many slots, you know? And at the time, leading up to, like, when my son started in CPS, it was during the pandemic and I was working at the city, which was just an incredibly challenging and time-consuming job to be working at that time. So, you know, it was always, it's always hard to navigate. Making sure that you're speaking up in, in every free moment you have and advocating for your own kids and it for the kids at your school and the kids that you're supporting and then also getting to the board. So always did my best to get there and to talk about it. But, um, you know, public comment at the board is one-way communications. So you talk for your two minutes and then that's it. Like, there's no follow-up. There's no, um, way to know if the board discussed the public comments. Like, I, I have no idea if any of this ever went anywhere, I guess.
What other advocacy have you done with, uh, with the CPS concerning helping people with disabilities?
Yeah, so the stuff, the work that I've done has been much more on like an interpersonal and individual level. There are some excellent and incredibly informed paid parent advocates and attorneys. But, and they, you know, the paid parent advocates that I know do also have pro bono portfolios, but they only have so much time. And, you know, one in five people in this country lives with disabilities. It's not a small portion of the population. So, you know, there are a lot of families that cannot afford to hire somebody. There are a lot of families that have barriers, um, like, you know, English as a second language or, or other elements that make it really hard to navigate the process. So most of the advocacy work I've done has been on helping students in their schools to get what they need to learn. And particularly helping families that, you know, don't have the opportunity to, to go about that through, through other ways.
So how, how do you know what the students need and what the families need? Do they come to you or how, how are you able to connect with them to, uh, assess their needs?
Yeah, so, you know, um, some of it, there's a Raise Your Hand Special Education Discussion Group on Facebook, where all of us parents who have sort of, be, being a special education parent means being an advocate kind of right off the bat. It's really not a system that is working particularly well right now. And so everybody kind of goes there to ask questions. You can search it to find, um, what, what has worked for other families in the past and what hasn't. Through being on the LSC for so long and being engaged with Raise Your Hand. You know, parents talk to other parents, right? It's, it's a peer-to-peer type of, of model where there are families at Budlong or Chappelle or Peterson or Jamison or other schools that are nearby where like, one of the teacher members of our LSC at Hibbard is the parent of CPS students in another school that's close by, right? So if she hears from someone that they're struggling, she might give them my name. I mean, that's one of many examples, but, you know, it's all sort of word of mouth. It's very kind of grassroots, I guess.
And what are some of the needs that they express, both the students and the families?
Yeah, so I work really ex, ex, not exclusively, but I, I try to focus on, um, elementary school students because there are any number of like accommodations and, um, learning tools and resources and supports from staff to fidget spinners, right? Like, it, it really covers, um, a wide range of options. I'm not, because my oldest child is nine, he's in fourth grade. Like, I don't know that much yet what, I was diagnosed very late in my educational career. So I never received the support myself. So if, if I get to a point where I don't feel confident that like I know enough to support that particular family, I would, I usually refer them, uh, to one of the parent advocates that does this professionally. And I feel like has a better understanding of those dynamics. A lot of the time, it's like as simple as sitting in an IEP meeting and, you know, the translation service isn't working and they want to ask the student to be the translator, which like, no. The third grade child, he's not going to translate. You know, it's little things like that all the time. It's, it's parents whose kids have disabilities where they are unable to regulate their internal body temperatures. And during the first week of school, for example, were put on a bus without air conditioning. On the Tuesday that there was like such an extreme heat warning, you weren't supposed to like take your pets outside for walks, right? It's just, it's like relentlessly, um, happening that way. And it is a confusing, um, system. It's a confusing process. You know, legislation and policy tend to be written in a very specific sort of, I don't know if I would call it a dialect, but, you know, there is, there is a legal language to it that, that can be overwhelming. You know, it's just, it's really a lot. It's a very challenging process to, when you're new to it especially. So ensuring that folks feel confident. You know, they might try to get talked out of certain things. And I think it's really important that students and families understand that they have rights and they are entitled to the support so that their kid can learn, just like everybody else. So navigating that process is always a little difficult. I want to be very clear about, like, the special education teams in schools are really doing great work. The educators are the only people keeping me sane in this system, right? It's, it, it feels a lot. It feels like it's dictated from a district level or more just like the bureaucracy of it, maybe. That sort of stifles anyone's ability to be too flexible or too responsive. There are all these other concerns that I'm sure that these teams face. From funding to accommodations to, you know, I, it's very clear that the people in the room want to be able to help students and families for them overwhelmingly, for the most part. It's just, um, a really overwhelming government system.
But, uh, earlier you mentioned IP meeting. What does IP mean?
I'm sorry, IEP is an Individualized Education Program.
Oh, IDP.
So, um, it is, once a child is assessed and evaluated and or diagnosed with a certain disability, they are given an Individualized Education Program, which lays out all of the different services and staff supports that'll be assigned. So that might be, um, additional social emotional learning with the social worker. That might be, or counselor, that might be occupational therapy, behavioral therapy, speech therapy. Then there might be, um, you know, different accommodations around assistance with note-taking in the classroom. Or if they have visual processing delays, they might need things read to them instead of having to read it themselves in order to better answer the question. If they have auditory processing delays, they might need to see it written down instead of having it read aloud, right? So it's, it's, it's really individualized, I guess, as, as stated, or that's how it should be.
So when you were young, you didn't have that helping you?
No.
And you, you struggled and you, you realized what the students need. The IDP does help, but what else would the students need?
Yeah, I mean, this is the part where it's a little bit less concrete, right? There's not necessarily a policy that you can pass, but it's, it's the mindset and the way that we approach, um, what it means to be a person with disabilities, I think. You know, ableism is, is alive and well and in all of us, including me. It's hard to unpack all the ways that, that you are socialized. But, you know, I, at a certain point in my educational career, just kind of came to this realization that I wasn't that smart. And that's not true. I, I, I think I'm actually quite smart, but because I worked so hard and did as much or more work as my peers, like, I just felt like, oh, okay, that's okay. I'm just not that book smart. And I think that, that does cause damage, right? That does harm one's, um, sense of self and self-esteem and mental health. And, um, I do not want kids to be a part of conversations that make them feel like they have deficits or like they are a burden or like they are extra work. Because we do not have deficits. We are not a burden, we are not extra work. Like, the systems have deficits, right? They were designed to serve a very narrow, idea of what a person should look like. And it is not our kids' responsibility to compensate for those deficits. And so I think it's really sort of taking the time to have these conversations, to talk about it with grace and compassion. But also, you know, in, in challenging ways that, that really start to get at the, you know, baseline conceptions that fuel that type of thinking and, and reframe that as really an opportunity to have all of these different and yet beautiful and important types of brains in the room, types of bodies in the room, right? Like, that, that is what makes us wonderful. And so I think that should be embraced and not viewed as sort of, oh, we have to do this thing now, you know?
Do you remember how old you were, uh, when you first realized that, uh, you needed some extra support? And, uh, did you get their support? Did you, uh, uh, did you, was there any point where, uh, where you were able to finally, uh, overcome, uh, your learning disability and advance very far? And what helped you if that happened?
Yeah, yeah, so I actually did not come to the realization myself. I was in high school and my, I have four younger siblings. And my second to last youngest sibling, I guess, my youngest brother, was diagnosed with ADHD. That, that condition pre, presents very differently in boys and girls. And for boys, um, their hyperactivity tends to present externally, which is more disruptive in a classroom and so is diagnosed more easily. And my mom read a book about it because her son was diagnosed and was like, hmm, this sounds like my daughter. And so she actually brought me in to get the evaluation and assessment. I was a junior in high school. So I do remember I had taken the, the SATs. And I got to retake them untimed and my score increased by like three hundred points or something obscene. Like, uh, it increased in a way that it typically, you know, does not increase, um, just by retaking it. So that was the first time that I understood the way, and that's a simple accommodation, right? An untimed, um, approach to testing. I think that this was at a time when, you know, I was so, I was kind of embarrassed and I didn't want, like, I could have asked teachers for more accommodations, especially in college. But like, I didn't. I, people didn't always respond very well to it, even educators, you know? It was like, um.
They would, uh, you.
It's not like a crutch or an excuse or I don't know what. But I, I didn't always ask or seek out those things. I am, you know, I'm an oldest child in a big family, like, we tend to be, uh, overachievers and very, um, type A and in our workplaces at least. And so I think there were some other traits that sort of helped me build my own ways of compensating for it. Um, I'm very organized, I block time in advance. I, I sort of had to design that for myself to be really successful in my career. But I've always, I've worked in the nonprofit and government spaces. So because I think I always cared so much about my work, it was never tedious, it was never daunting. I mean, parts of it, fine, but, you know, that helped also to make it so that I wanted to, to do really well and to, um, be very good at what I was doing. So obviously, I would have rather had all of those skills built up from an early age. I think it would have required a lot less, um, sort of stumbling and navigating those processes and trying to understand what was going on. You know, I think self-awareness and clarity around what you need are very helpful. So, uh, yeah, but being in therapy and, and having other elements have certainly also helped with that.
How could you help, uh, uh, students and families who are too embarrassed to ask for help? Because they feel that if they were to ask for help, they might, uh, be labeled as a needy.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think having these conversations, right? Like, the parents, I've met parents that are, that have those concerns, right? And that they're legitimate. I understand where they are coming from with those. And I try to keep it really centered on their kids because there is nobody who fights harder for their kids than a special education parent. Like, it's, it's a battle, it is emotionally exhausting, it takes a ton of time. You are rapidly trying to learn as much as you can. I mean, that's how parents are, right? We want our, the best for our kids. And the love that folks have for their kids, it's so sincere and understanding that even hearing your parents talk about it that way, like, that can contribute to self-doubt and really negatively impact kids' confidence and, um, their ability to learn how to self-advocate and to be proud and to, move through the world, you know, demanding for themselves the things that they are, have every right under the law to have, right? And so I think interpersonal conversations really are particularly helpful in this because when you're talking with folks and you're building relationships and you're all coming from the same place, which is just that you want what's best for your and other people's children, that, that really helps a lot.
As a board member, how would you be able to, uh, get more of these resources? Get these, uh, uh, needs met for disability, for students with disabilities?
Yeah, so, I mean, my kid's school looks demographically a lot like, you know, the majority of schools in District Two. So it's, um, seventy-four percent low-income families. It is about seven percent white student enrollment. There are thirty-eight languages spoken, more than half of the families are immigrant families. It is why the school is so exceptionally wonderful, right? It, that is what makes us so beautiful and such an incredible community. It also means that we don't have a big, uh, Friends of Hibbard account sitting around with six figures worth of money in it to compensate for gaps in a budget, right? The biggest issue I see, uh, is it's easy to fix, right? So we have like hard to fix and easy to fix things on a lot of these issue areas. The way that, that the district determines how much funding a school gets is by taking the total number of IEPs and minutes, which are just sort of like minutes of dedicated time, uh, that students with disabilities re, receive. They subtract the outgoing students and then they give you that money. They do not project for incoming students or yet unidentified students with disabilities. So you lose a chunk of your special education funding without any projecting of what you will actually need for the next year. So at Hibbard, for example, I've, I've passed eight school-level budgets, right? So every year, we lose like three or four members of our special education team at the beginning of the year. Then CPS does what's called a mid-year reallocation, where they say, oh, what was your actual enrollment? What are your actual number of students with disabilities and IEPs and minutes? And they give you the money back. But at that point, we've been short-staffed for half the year. We've let go of staff and we now have to look for new ones, which takes time and energy. It's just, to me, that is an easy fix, right? Whatever statistic the, the experts suggest, I'm happy to listen to, whether it's like a five-year average or something. But just include funding that projects for incoming students with disabilities. And that way, you know, a lot of other schools that maybe have some more flexible resources are able to fill in that money. And then when the mid-year reallocation comes, they can make it a wash, right? It's like, it's like having a little bit of front load to your budget. Um, and schools like Hibbard that are a beautiful school community, but not a, certainly not like a cash-rich community school, they can't do that, right? It has a pretty devastating impact for, for special education teachers and staff, for students, for families and for the school community at large. So I think that is one sort of low-hanging fruit solution that we could bring to the table as board members. That's a policy change that can be made by, um, members of the Board of Education.
You know, when they allocate funds for, um, a, a school and then they depend on how many students show up on the first day of school? Well, how, uh, how are they able to determine just by that how much funding, um, needs to be allocated, uh, for students with disabilities? They can't go by that, so, right?
I mean, it doesn't make sense. I, it's, I've spent eight years trying to figure out why they do it this way. To, I have yet to have an answer for that, right? This just seems like, you know, people write, well-intentioned people write policy who don't have to implement it. And so if you're removed from the school-level budget process and you're like, well, they're going to get the money, so it'll be fine, right? At the mid-year reallocation, I think, I, I try to assume the best of everybody. So my assumption is that this is just something that has gone overlooked because there hasn't been a strong voice advocating it for it. Who has that experience? Who has the experience as a parent, as an LSC member, as, um, a community member? Doing it every day, every year, every, you know?
Uh, you, uh, on your platform, you, uh, spoke about, uh, needs-based funding. Could you talk more about that and how that could help?
Yeah, so I think nationally, if you look at, um, like, data and research and other districts, you know, moving towards an evidence-based or needs-based, they use those terms kind of interchangeably, funding model is recognized as, as really the industry standard at this point. Um, that's how the state now funds, uh, the districts at the, in, in Illinois. It is based on the idea that like, just because you have thirty students, if you have thirty students in a classroom that are all native English speakers and you have thirty kids in a classroom, ten of whom are native English speakers, twenty of whom are English language learners, eight of whom are kids with disabilities, two of whom are, um, housing insecure or experiencing homelessness, right? Like, you don't need the same number of people because those are not, the, the amount of need and support required for those two classrooms are not equal. So we've been going this whole time just giving X number of dollars per student universally across the board, no matter what. And that is not a reasonable approach to, you know, we, we get new information and we learn and we adapt and we become better. It's a good thing. So I think shifting to a needs-based funding model is the right, um, approach. I will caveat that by saying one-size-fits-all anything policy can be really challenging. And I think that in the past with the student-based budgeting model, it was still an opaque process, but there was a process for schools to appeal decisions, funding cuts, things like that. It went through the principals. I have no idea and was, you know, we were never able to understand why certain decisions were made, why certain appeals were granted and others weren't. It was not public facing. why certain appeals were granted and others weren't. It was not public-facing, there there was no that I was able to find, no set policies around why a appeal is valid or invalid, right? And they did not allow schools to appeal this year. Um, they delayed publishing the full budgets. I I just, I think that the way that this was rolled out was I I understand the intention behind it and I am happy that we are moving towards this. I just think it needs to be done in a way that is much more responsive, that allows for more two-way communication, community engagement, community education and understanding and input. And then I would like to see the budget appeal process democratized, right? This should be publicly available, like any school should be able to go and see what schools appealed and why they were granted those appeals or not. This this should be out there for people to talk about, right? Because I think that there's a lot of folks who were in schools that have never really had to look at these types of challenges in terms of their budgets before. And I get, I really do understand the frustration and the sort of outrage that that they might lose an educator or a specials program or any of that stuff. On the other hand, like my daughter's class had, my daughter had six different first-grade teachers last year because of a really overcrowded, under-resourced classroom. It was nobody's fault, right? I'm on the LSC-approved budget. I know the principal. But because Hibbert is a school that has a dual-language track program that is a two-way immersive English and Spanish, and then we also have thirty-seven other languages spoken. Just the number of kids doesn't tell you how many classrooms we need, right? So there are little things like that where I think um there has to be room for schools to explain how how their school works and say, this is why this is not gonna work for us.
When schools appeal, are they able to present what you just described in their appeal? Such as we have uh such and such uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, English uh second, second language learners, English learners, or we have uh students with disabilities. And uh the budget that you gave us does not uh address those students. Are they able to uh uh detail the appeal? And uh is the appeal uh before, is there a hearing? Or is it just like it goes into an office and then a hearing officer or some, not even a hearing officer, somebody uh reads it and then gives a decision?
Great question. I have never seen an appeal. It it's always gone through the principal. The principal's only allowed to share certain information with their LSC. So we know that, you know, they'll tell us, we're appealing this. But we don't know what, is there a form? Is it, do they write an email? I have no idea um how that has worked in the past. And from what I understand, the principals have no idea how the decisions are made on the back end of that. So, and once it's denied, it's denied. That's it.
No, no, uh, no appeal, no further appeal.
That's what you're stuck with until the mid-year reallocation. We also determine our budgets based on the twentieth-day enrollment. We determine budgets. I think the budget period should start earlier in the year to allow for more transparency and community input. But currently, we receive our proposed budgets as an LSC and start approving them in like May and June, June, I think. Um, sorry, my memory. And they have to be done by July. I mean, you you have like two weeks, that's it. Like, I just, it's all done. I don't understand why we choose the twentieth-day enrollment. Like, at at a school like Hibbert that ends up getting, you know, we receive a lot of uh families from Afghanistan a few years ago. Last year, we uh welcomed a number of migrant families from um nearby sh- shelters. So if we have a hundred and twenty more kids on the day that we are doing our budget, why are we using the twentieth-day enrollment? There might be a reason. I don't know, maybe state law dictates you use the twentieth. I have no idea, but uh, no one has ever been able to answer me that question for me. And that is also a question I have been asking for eight years straight. So I would love to better understand why we picked that day as the day to use.
Twentieth day of enrollment is that the, so that is uh uh during the like June-July when the students are getting uh enrolled uh into their school? And it's the twentieth day of enrollment, or uh is that what this meant?
It's like if I, so right now, we're in the FY twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And in May, late May or early June, I think, is when our LSC would get our budget to review for the FY twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And our numbers are dictated by our enrollment on the twentieth day of the current school year. That's how they decide what we're gonna get next year. And again, I just, if we have a more accurate number on the day that we're doing, I I don't I am not clear on why they do it that way. And I would like, I think this is all part of a bigger problem, right? Like, this is all information that should be accessible, that should be transparent, that should be discussed and considered by all the stakeholders involved, everybody that has, and I would argue, all human beings have a stake in educating the next generation of future adults that are gonna make decisions about our, all of our lives one day, right?
When, um, so the first day of school is a uh is a, they use that. And then they use the twentieth day of uh the school year as well. So how do those two balance out? How how do they?
We don't use the first day at all. We use the twentieth day only.
Okay, so before, it was like the head count for the first day of school, but uh they stopped that?
I don't think it's ever been, I think it's always been the twentieth day head count. Cause I think they want to give a couple weeks for like families that are transferring, or maybe, you know, because they'll like, because we have the choice program where families can get waitlisted for a certain school, maybe they don't get in right away. They just wanna make sure that they capture, I think, as many students as possible. I just don't understand why that day, rather than the twentieth day of the second semester of school, which would seem to me at least a more accurate reflection of what the potential uh enrollment will be in the next year.
Oh, so I I see. So the twentieth day, they use to um uh forecast uh future enrollment, and the first day of school is to uh uh determine uh how much money is budgeted?
I I don't use the first day of school enrollment for anything with budgets, to my knowledge. It's only the twentieth day, and I don't know what they use to do, uh, what the date is that they use to do the mid-year reallocation. I would have to actually look that up.
What about appeals? You know, they, you said that the principal is not uh does not talk about the what goes into the appeal. Uh, do you know if the principal is not allowed to talk about it, or just nobody asked?
Um, I don't know. I mean, I've certainly asked, but part of the problem is because the budget process is so, it feels so rushed. Like, as an LSC member, you you're subject to the Open Meetings Act. You can't talk about this stuff in a group without violating that. So it all has to be, you know, in a meeting room where everybody's there and it's open to the public. So like, we get presented with our budget. And then we have our next meeting, and that's when we have to approve the budget. In between those two meetings, the principal is scrambling to appeal and to wait. Sometimes we approve the budget without even knowing yet whether or not our appeal has been granted. But we still have to approve the budget as the LSC. And there does not seem to be any um ability for LSCs to reject budgets also, which is weird. Like, why even have us approve them then if we're not allowed to reject them?
How much time do LSCs have uh to study uh the new budget?
So it's a pretty, I mean, the the these are all volunteer positions, right? So um, everybody has a lot going on, but, you know, we usually have a couple of weeks to look at it. The principal will like present it at that meeting. Most, like throughout the year, LSC meetings, depending on what's going on at any given school, aren't necessarily that long, right? You approve any sort of fund expenditures. You talk about your back and your pack and your uh PTO or your friends of. You talk about all these other, you approve any fundraisers, like your uh, affy tapple or whatever. We do a car wash for the sixth-grade class. But, you know, it's not the meetings that take a long time, that can be like four-hour-long meetings, are the budget meetings and the principal evaluation meetings. Because those require a lot more investment of time and and effort.
When the principal presents you with the budget and you might not understand uh some parts of it, uh, under the Open Meetings Act, are you able to ask the principal about it? Or you're not even allowed to ask the uh the principal to clarify uh with between uh the two meetings?
No, we we can ask, um, you can send like an email as long as everybody else is BCC'd, or it's just you um, asking the principal, and then you can share it with folks like one-off. Um, so there, I mean, there are ways to communicate about it and around it, but you know, I tend to, I like co-governance models, I like participatory practices. So I think it's better to try to get those questions out um with the group. So everyone can hear the answers, so that the people who are attending the meeting have an opportunity to hear the explanations. You know, I think that is a better, um, it it's just a more open and collaborative way to to try to work towards solutions.
That's that's correct, because then uh everybody could uh reflect and uh and what was asked and what uh what the answer was. Uh, because uh if one person needed to ask, then there must have been something that needed to be clarified.
That's right. And maybe I hear a response and think it means one thing, and someone else hears the response and think it means, you know, I mean, everybody's a human being, right? So we all have our own lens and flaws and strengths. And so I think it's helpful to try to do as much as possible, as out in the open as possible.
You were endorsed by uh two unions that I see, the uh IUOE uh one fifty, which uh is the construction workers, right?
Operating engineers, they sort of operate the big machines.
Uh, uh, the machines in the uh schools?
No, like, construction machines.
Construction machines.
Like, I I can't, I don't know why my brain is not bulldozers and cranes and, you know?
And uh, do you, did you ask for their endorsement, or how 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 were you able to get the endorsement?
Yeah, I also, just to flag, have the endorsement of the Teamsters, the Carpenters. Uh, oh, gosh, I'm gonna forget. One, hold on one second. I don't wanna miss anybody. I'm so sorry. I just wanna make sure I don't forget.
There was one too, the IUOE three ninety-nine, that's a uh motion picture uh producers. So that was, that was uh one of the ones I wanted to ask you about too. Uh, how how were you able to get, you know, get them?
That's also operating engineers. One fifty and three ninety-nine are kind of similar. I have plumbers, I have Mid-America Carpenter's Regional Council and the Teamsters in addition to the two um locals. IUOE locals, sorry.
Do you know how how you got the endorsement? Did you ask, or did they just uh give it to you based on your background? What happened?
Yeah, so, you know, when you start running, you reach out to unions, you reach out to elected officials, you reach out to as many folks as you can think of, organizations, Planned Parenthood, Personal PAC, right, all of these different groups that do endorsements. Um, in this case, the Chicago Federation of Labor meets as a body and votes on endorsements. They did not make an endorsement in District Two. So after that, I then followed up and called and asked if they would in endorse me individually outside of the collective decision. So um, that was how, you know, some of those came in. Some, some ask you to submit questionnaires and do meetings. You know, it kind of varies depending on the group, like firefighters, we did just a meeting. Uh, gosh. Citizens Unite, which is another coalition of both labor and also sort of nonprofit organizations, they do an endorsement. You know, it's it's sort of a process. The first month of this campaign, actually, um, I wasn't running yet because I was working with a friend of mine, Rosemary Vega, who is a very can I swear? She's a very bad, yes, uh, education organizer. Um, and we were trying to democratize running, actually. We wanted to make sure that like every parent, regardless of their experience or their access or their privilege, felt confident that they could also run and have their voices heard. So, you know, like the petitions, you have, you're supposed to have those reviewed by an election attorney. So we did that and put it in a Google Drive. Um, we found all the resources and recommendations we could find from all these different sources, and we put them in a Google Drive. And Raise Your Hand would host information sessions for parents. That was why I actually got into the race a little bit later, cause that was, I spent kind of the first month. Because I grew up around politics, so like I understand them, but that's not the case forever. And I'm very active in them in my own adult life as a whole human being um with political interests. And I think it can be really overwhelming for folks that maybe aren't as familiar with those processes. It can be very expensive um to to just collect the petitions, right? And so wanting to make sure that folks had all that information. I think it was just too rushed of a period because of how the maps were not finalized until right when you needed to start collecting signatures. But I am hopeful that in two years, when it becomes fully elected, that we'll be able to really um create that scaffolding, so that if people wanna run, they can run. Um, regardless of, you know, the more democracy, the better. So I think, you know, we really would like to see that much more democratized. And I'm, yeah.
How difficult was it to get the petition signatures and were you challenged?
It was very, I mean, so again, like I'm a full-time working single mom. I'm on the Board of Planned Parenthood. I'm um involved in peer uh survivor groups for survivors of gender-based violence. I am on our LSC. I, you know, I'm very involved in a lot of things with my free time, and so yes, it was very hard to get the signatures, just the timeline alone. Again, I'm lucky to have come to be, have the support of like folks that are willing to make donations. So I was able to hire someone to help me collect signatures, right? But that is not always the easiest process. I was not challenged. I I mean, I was out there every single day, but three thousand signatures is still three thousand, that's a lot of signatures. And so, and then you have to get each page notarized, and you have to, you know, there's all these different steps that you have to do, and they have to live in your district. So you wanna like check the addresses and make sure they're accurate, otherwise it's not a valid signature. Um, all those little things, it just takes, it takes some time. And again, that, that's not like easily, that's not written- Um and again, that that's not like easily, that's not written down in layman's terms anywhere for someone to read, right? So it's just very confusing.
So you got the three thousand signatures and how many did you need?
One thousand was the minimum, three thousand was the maximum. So you get the maximum in case you get challenged, but I did not get challenged. So I assume that's cuz and again, we have, you hire, or I chose to, and I believe the other four campaigns chose to hire an election attorney to look at all the petitions, it's public records, so they can review them and say like, I'm not entirely sure what they would even look for, but they know it's their job, so I trust them. Um so I didn't challenge anyone and I was not challenged.
What about the other uh elected officials? Uh you got their endorsements uh too. Did you uh have to approach them? Uh did they uh do a a call for for people to uh uh submit the uh submit their candidacy for them to review? Uh what happened?
Yeah, so I just reached out to every elected I could. Some of them uh would do more formal um like collaborative endorsement sessions that included a questionnaire and an interview with their ward organization. Um with other electeds, they might sit down and meet with you and, you know, go to breakfast and ask you questions and you talk to them. Um I've been working in Chicago's nonprofit and government sector on policy issues for my entire career. So I do, you know, there are elected officials that or just as a parent, you know, I've gone down to Springfield to advocate on CPS stuff, like about witness slips, all of those things. So I think um you know, but honestly, when I would talk to folks, um I'm the only candidate in this race that has kids enrolled in CPS schools currently. And I think that was a big selling point for a lot of elected legislators.
When you uh when you uh spoke with the uh the, no, when you did the uh questionnaires, that takes a lot of time. Were you able to complete the all the questionnaires that were available to you? Or did you uh uh only were able to do some of them?
I did every questionnaire except for one, um which was one I or two. And those were two that I chose not to submit, not that I didn't have time to submit. Um but there were a lot, especially cuz up here in this district, we have a lot of what's called IPOs, which are independent ward organizations. So there might be like um the the fortieth ward uh dem- democrats, which is run by the elected committeemen and or aldermen. And then there's the fortieth ward Neighbors for Justice or um, you know, this independent community-based ward organization. Um the north and northwest side of Chicago has a lot of IPOs. Um and they've been incredibly, you know, Network Forty-Nine is a forty-ninth ward ward organization that has been on the frontlines fighting for Harold Washington and public education and a lot of these issues in a very grassroots organizing kind of way for forever. I honestly, we're, we are only having an elected school board because we are standing on the shoulders of giants, right? We are here because all of these people for all of these decades have been organizing for it. And so and that's an example of one of those groups that's been here for a very, very long time. Um you know, we, I think not every district has as many questionnaires to fill out. Everybody had a lot, but we had a lot, a lot, like thirty-something. So.
On policy issues, um uh you worked before on policy and that helped you uh gain experience. So what in your experience uh uh are you applying uh toward the issues uh uh on the Chicago School Board?
Yeah, so my website, uh maggieforchicago.com has an issues page that uh is a brief novel. Uh it's a dropdown, so you don't have to read anything you're not interested on about. But um you know, I think because I worked at the city, I understand understanding how things move through the backend of city bureaucracy, how programs and projects and policies move through the Department of Law, move through the Office of Budget Management, move through the Department of Finance, move through the Department of Risk Management, right? These are all internal teams that you have to get approval from or incorporate feedback from over the course of months and months and months. And that's one step of moving a policy through. Um it is, all cities and towns and bureaucracies have a level of red tape and bureaucracy. That's about, I believe, it it the intention is that it's about accountability, right? These are public funds, these are taxpayer dollars, we are obligated to spend them in a way that is responsible and that is um in line with what the citizens want and need, et cetera, et cetera. But like it's, it is a very daunting process. Um and it's a lot of back and forth and it takes a lot of time. And so I think that part of the biggest asset that I would bring to the board, actually, um in terms of you know, operationalizing our work, is that knowledge base. Because that takes years of working at the city to just learn the acronyms. No, I'm just kidding, but it takes a really long time to to navigate those, to build relationships with folks that work there, to understand how something needs to be presented to each different internal team so that it can continue to move forward. Um and to like understand what it will look like, the policy implementation side of it, right? Like, what will the unintended consequences be? How will an individual's school level be impacted by this broad-reaching policy? All of those pieces, I think I'll bre- I'll be able to bring that lens to the board. And I I don't think everybody, every member of the board needs that experience, but I do think it helps to have one person with it, certainly.
Do you think that with all this experience uh at the backend and seeing all this bureaucracy, do you have any uh plan that to, is there a way to uh reduce the bureaucracy uh in your position?
Oh, um I don't know. I mean, I don't know also, like undoing systems that are so sophisticated and interconnected and really entrenched in um it it's very, it's difficult, systems change is hard. I mean, that's, that is grueling work. I think it's worthwhile to try, but I would, I would certainly wanna be focused first on, again, there is low-hanging fruit. There are policy changes that can happen that are not hard, that will not take a long time to in to execute on, that do not need a, you know, political savvy and acumen to navigate public perception and state legislators and city council and all, you know. There's plenty there that can be done right off the bat. Um
So yes.
Like the special education funding uh algorithm fix, funding methodology fix. There are policies that we can write to entrench protections for LGBTQIA+ communities, trans students and families. There are, I would like us to, right now, um comprehensive sex ed from kindergarten is not funded. It's a mandate from state law that is not given any money. Uh so I I won't go into the details, it's all on the website, but there's a lot of problems with the implementation and it's been ten years since that bill passed, so I'd like to see that improved. Um uh uh gosh, uh language services for LSEs and communities that ha- speak, you know, have to in to help with parent involvement and parent connections. Um there there are a lot, there's a lot of things that we can do um that I think I I don't mean to under, to downplay the importance of the budget, you know, these are those big issues are important, I just think we need to be able to do more than one thing at a time. Because I also think ensuring that uh queer students and their families feel safe and secure in their learning environments are as important as a budget, balanced budget.
Do you think that with your experience in the po- on the backend and on the policy side, is there a way that uh when you have good ideas and good suggestions that uh you could help the board navigate the backend faster? So that uh, you know, I'm actually dismantling uh the 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 bureaucracy, but actually uh just uh using the uh going through the bureaucracy more efficiently?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my hope, right? Would be to say like, okay, one, you know, a group of board members want to accomplish this outcome and here's the policy they think is best to to do that. And to be able to say, that's great, here's the wording, we need to present this with to the Department of Law and they'll give us feedback and we'll incorporate that. And then is it funded or not funded? If it's not funded, you don't really have to worry about OBM or finance or some of those folks. But um you know, how do we want to make sure it gets through risk? Make sure it gets, like, have our, the program team looked at it yet? Like, how are you gonna track it? Do we collect that data now? Do we have a mechanism to collect? I mean, there's a lot of I think one of the biggest issues that all government, uh sorry, my, we have kittens. Um I think the biggest issue that all governments face is really seriously this disconnect between the people that write policy and the people that have to implement policy. They do not talk to each other, they are not the same people most of the time, and it's it's really problematic, like then when, yeah, it's just a nightmare.
But that, when you uh, if you become a board member, do you think there's any way for you to bring the two sides together so that they do talk with each other and uh be able?
I mean, anyone can do that now for any role, like policymakers, listen to this radio show and talk to policy implementers before you finalize whatever you're putting together kind of thing. But um you know, I think that being a person in the room that remembers to flag that that is needed matters, right? Because then everybody can collectively say, can we meet with uh the department that handles all of the LSE relations? So ca- we can talk to them about what their current budget is, uh how many schools they think would meet the need, uh what that would look like and providing it to them, all of those different pieces that that should be included or not included in the policy to whatever degree, right? Like, I don't know the answers to those questions. I would trust the the men and women and people that are sitting at their desks every darn day trying to do the work um to help inform that, certainly.
There is an increase in homeless students now. Uh what are your ideas about the the resources that are necessary to address those students and their families?
Yeah, um so that in CPS acronyms, that's STLS, which is Students in Transitional Living Situations. Um and honestly, I think that when we are talking about any given population of human beings uh with a lived experience that is dramatically removed from our own. I've never been housing insecure in my life. I've never faced housing instability or uncertainty or homelessness. And so I don't believe that I am the right person to design and to imagine those solutions. Um I certainly wanna be a part of the conversation as a listener and a learner and be a part of building out and doing the work of of those supports. But I think, you know, having partnerships with um folks like Doug at the Chicago Homeless Coalition. Um you know, you also have to respect student and family privacy, so you can't necessarily go straight to the to those groups, right? But when I worked at City Hall, um one thing we did was to create a advisory council that was made up of housing insecure and housing unstable and homeless human beings, people who had experienced that over the course of their lives, to help guide any policy decisions being made, any program implementation being done. And I think centering um those voices and ensuring they are the, not just part of the process, but really at the center of it is is really important. I hope that doesn't sound like a non-answer or a dodge, it's not that. It's just, it's just not my experience and I don't I don't like it when people speak for me on issues that are my experience and so I don't wanna speak for others.
We appreciate the answer, it's a very good answer. What about the uh that the council that you were speaking of uh of the uh housing insecure uh peop- uh individuals that were part of the council? How were the members of those council uh of that council brought together? Was it to through outreach, invitation? Uh uh do you have any idea?
So I worked, um my job at the city at that time was the Chief Philanthropy and Partnerships Officer. I worked on with every single city department and on every single mayoral initiative that involved a third party that was philanthropy or the nonprofit sector. It's not a job for one person, just to be clear. Um but my role was really to facilitate um and lead those programs, again, through that bureaucratic internal department side of things. Um through procurement processes, through um contract uh and uh MOUs and other tools to sort of um codify those those relationships with partners. And so I was not, in that case, doing the implementation. I do know that the mayor's policy team um were tasked with leading that work and um in partnership with DOH, the Department of Housing, under the leadership of Marisa Navarro. But I I was bobbing and weaving, you know? It was just one crisis after the another, one program after the other. So sort of never got to really be as engaged as, I'm sure it would have been nice to be more engaged with like everything coming to fruition, but I was off to the next thing by that time usually.
What is MOU?
I'm sorry, memorandum of understanding. It's sort of like a less complicated version of a legal contract. Um it's it it's easier to execute with with all the city departments. Um and and it's usually like if you're talking about a three-way partnership, where like when we worked to create the first ever Chicago Public Health Equity Fund, that was the CDPH, uh Chicago Department of Public Health, uh MacArthur Foundation and United Way. So United Way and the MacArthur Foundation need to have an MOU because for the city to enter into a contract with one of them that was about a partnership with both of them, if that makes sense. I don't know how, I don't know if I said that clearly, but um just another way that uh we sort of set, I think, I think to see it more as like uh setting the roles, the expectations, the goals, the responsibilities, the leadership team, all those pieces and making sure that that everybody understands what their responsibilities are uh was sort of how that fleshed out.
And what about the under-resourced schools versus the schools with a lot of resources? Is there any way to uh even ev- even that out? Uh would that even fly?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think so. I think that um we need more than a five-year plan. I think we need more like a twenty-year plan. More than a five-year plan, I think we need more like a twenty-year plan to. Address how we reinvest and rebuild our neighborhood schools, uh, in an equitable way. I think we need to look at. Right now, in the past, at times CPS has had like one grant writer. There are a lot of state and federal grants available to school systems. That would be bringing in. You know, six figures theoretically a year in contributed revenue. There are also a lot of schools that have partnerships like Disney, I believe, uh, rents out their rooftop. To a telecom satellite communication company and they generates revenue for their school. We have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of infrastructure. I would like to see us not just talking about the. Bizarre draconian practice of closing schools in communities when we understand the harm of this. And when somehow, five years later, we continue to end up right back in the same, like, it's clearly not, that is not a long-term solution. Otherwise it would have worked by now. Or like high-interest loans or junk municipal bonds or one of the other, what I find to be. Not fiscally sound and, and. Forward-thinking approaches to budget deficits, right? So I think I would like to see the district. Doing new things, or, or taking on. School-level practices, right? And, and working together through community partnerships with local businesses and nonprofit organizations. If we have a school that is under-enrolled, it does not have to be a building that is underutilized. If you have a mutual aid or a, um, soup kitchen or a, why, why not? Utilize the spaces in this community center that is more than bricks and mortar. Anyone who has ever walked by a neighborhood school understands what that building means to a community, right? There are families in the summer playing soccer, the dads and the sons and the little girls all together, there's. They tend to have lower rates of violence, um, than other areas in neighborhoods near schools, like. They are, they are important to their community, that is community infrastructure. And we know that there are these needs that students have, after-school care, arts programming, all these. Why are we not considering bringing in? Those community organizations and offering a nonprofit rental rate and having them be on-site, right? At the Chicago Cultural Center, when I worked at the Department of Cultural Affairs. The Chicago Cultural Center rents out office space to the Children's Choir, to After-School Matters, to other organizations. And they generate revenue. CPS has not even scratched the surface of what they can and should be doing in terms of. Doing the work to create revenue when we are, you know. And we should do all the things at once, right? We should also be lobbying the state for additional funding, for equitable pension funding. And all of these things, again, are on my website, I know it's kind of boring, I promise I won't talk about like legacy and normal pension contributions or procurement reform. But this is all to say that like, I'm very hopeful because I know how incredible our communities are. And our kids are, and our parents, and our caregivers, and our teachers, and everybody, everybody. And these buildings are incredibly joyful places, even the ones that are struggling, right? And so, I think that the best things about CPS schools are us. We are the best part of our schools and. We should be. Fighting tooth and nail to, to find every available option to make sure that, that we're protecting that.
Thank you so much, Maggie Colliton-Huber for joining us on WCRD Chicago eighty-eight point three FM today. If our listeners want to learn more about you, where should they go?
Yeah, so my website is www.maggiforchicago.com. I'm also on Instagram and Facebook. With at Maggie for Chicago Schools. You can find me both places.
Yeah, thank you so much for joining us because we reached out to a lot of the other candidates and they, uh, they did not. Either did not reply or were not able to join us, so thank you so much for sharing.
Of course, thank you so much for caring about the race and for reaching out. And I think, you know, I hope everybody, as many people know that this is happening as possible and, um. That it's the start of a really important shift in CPS schools.
Thank you so much, Maggie.
Thanks.